We'll call this council meeting to order. First, if we have a moment of silence. Thank you. We'll ask Ms. Conway to lead us in the pledge.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and may be seated welcome to Georgetown city council meeting for February the 12th, two thousand and twenty-four. First, we want to do a roll call. Madam Clerk, if you give the roll call.
Mr. Allen?
Here.
Mrs. Wilkins, Warren. Mrs. Butcher Conway?
Here.
Mrs. Hambrich?
Present.
And Mr. Hampton?
Here.
Mr. Showalter?
Here.
Mr. Stone? Mrs. Tackett?
Here.
You all received the minutes from the last meeting. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
Motion, Mayor.
Motion made by Ms. Tackett, second by Mr. Allen. Are there further questions and/or comments? All those for the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say likewise. Let the record reflect that the motion passed. You should have received the check registry in your packet. If you have received that, please raise your hand. Let the record show that all council members present receive the registry. At this time, we have public comments. Want to remind you of the procedures. You will have four minutes to state what business you want to bring before this council. Please be mindful of that four minutes. You'll be have a time. Madam Clerk, you will time. And at the end of that four minutes, we ask that you, at that time, to finish your sentence and then take your seat and be mindful and be respectful of everybody else that still wants to speak. At this time, we have Ms. Lori Sanders to come up for the two thousand and twenty-four event.
I'd like to take four minutes. I'll do my best. I can be pretty speedy. I can just be a speed broker when I have to.
Thank you, ma'am.
First off, it is love here downtown for the next couple of weeks, and I think all of you will have a passport in your hands, so make sure. I know the mayor is very supportive of our downtown, and I think he's even going to mention it too. So, keep it in mind, grab it, and do a little bit of chopping, show some love. Starting out with the summer concert series. It's hard to believe we're going on our twelfth year. Super excited about that. Our first one up will be May twenty-fifth, which is Horsey Hundred weekend, of course. And just an FYI, Horsey Hundred will be at Brookings Park this year instead of Georgetown College. So, we have already talked to Police Public Works. We're going to do the same thing we've always done for the concert series, and we will have it once again right on the square downtown. June fifteenth will be our next date. Now, that's going to be a little bit different because we're going to be celebrating having our June fifteenth, Juneteenth festivities and activities too on that day. So, we're actually going to be launching the Georgetown Scott County African American Heritage Geocache Trail on that morning, so we're excited about that. We also are considering a unity walk. We're working with our partners on whether or not we want to do that here in downtown Georgetown or not. So, you may see a little bit of a time difference in things that we've normally done with our schedule on the applications, but we have a really good lineup for Juneteenth. It's going to be Movel, who is local to Georgetown, Lofa Souls, and Chris Linton, a really good country singer. So, I think it'll be fun. And then August third, we have Honey Child, which is a reschedule. I think the mayor came to, he did come actually, to our historic downtown meeting, and we discussed that we were only going to be having a couple of concerts this year so that we don't have our streets closed too often downtown on a Saturday night. We certainly don't want to give the impression to outside visitors that we are closed for business on Saturdays. So, had decided that we were going to try and stick with two, but I had a band cancellation. I had to reschedule them. And as many of you all know, Honey Child is a favorite to our Georgetownians, so we had to reschedule. Or I would have probably been strung up on Courthouse Square here. So, we rescheduled them for August third. So, once again, we'll close the square between twelve and two. Most of the times, it will be two P.M. However, on June fifteenth, we will close it at noon because we have three bands coming in. We'll have to set up the stage early, and I'm bringing a sound guy in where normally they bring, the bands bring their own sound. This time, it's going to be plug and play like the festivals so that we can get all three bands up and down, and plus, we expect to have some guest speakers on that afternoon, too. And then, of course, the streets, Hamilton to Broadway, generally, we close them right about four P.M. But on June fifteenth, we may have some additional vendors and activities, so we may close a little bit earlier than that. We're going to do our best not to close until four because we certainly like to wait until our businesses are closed. But I will have to say, I have talked to our downtown businesses, and they are aware of our activities for June fifteenth. So, that's the first one. All of our additional insureds are included in the packet for May twenty-fifth and June fifteenth. However, August third is not in your packet. That's because our insurance doesn't renew until July. So, as soon as July hits, we'll send those over to you. And once we get approval, we will also get you Chincapin, Country Boy Brewing, and Solange to Pubs, COIs. Once you all approve the event, then I go to them to make sure that we are listed as additional insured and the City of Georgetown will be listed also. And I have spoken to Tracy about that. Best of the Bluegrass Festival of the Horse. I'll be releasing the first. September fifth, twenty-eight, everything stays the same except for the City Hall parking lot. As you all are aware, we put the carnival behind City Hall. We're so excited that we are going to get the new Farmers Market Pavilion, but it does take up space for my carnival. And I need additional space so that we can keep things going with the carnival rides that we currently have. If not, they probably will not want to come. But on top of that, if I don't have the carnival, I lose about ten thousand dollars that goes towards the Festival of the Horse, and our whole operating budget is around thirty thousand. So, that's a big lump sum that I have to try and make up for if we're not able to use behind City Hall and between the County Attorney's Office and the Justice Building. So, I wish Sondra was here because I would thank her. She's the one who gave me the courage to go and talk to Darren and the County Attorney's Office to make sure they were okay if I closed down through there and had additional carnival rides. And I also will have to say, I did meet with police, fire, and EMS and EMA about it because we wanted to make sure that there was access to the Justice Building, which will come in off of Hamilton. There will be a section left open, and they assured me that the fire truck could get through there, and there should not be any disruptions as far as safety-wise goes to getting to the Justice Building during that weekend. So, that's that one. Oh, Home for the Holidays, that's the last one. The Christmas Parade, which you all know about that because you all ride in it. So, anyway, that's all we got.
Okay. Do I have a motion to?
Motion, Mayor.
Motion's made by Ms. Tackett, second by Ms. Conway.
Can we back up and clarify? That was four different events?
It's more than that.
Well, four events, but different.
Concert Series is one.
Concert Series.
Festival of the Horse. And then Home for the Holidays.
And the August one?
It's inside of Summer Concert Series, so it's all in one application. You all probably do have one also for Horsey Hundred.
Right.
It is at, like I said, it is at Brookings Park this year. And I don't think they're going to need anything other than police support. Right now, there are no street closures. Originally, I thought that they were going to ask for Cardinal Drive for part of the time, but they are not. So, it'll just be a matter of having some police support when they come out off of Cardinal Drive and make their way into the city. But the routes are not set in stone yet, and I know that they have not discussed the routes with the police as of now. So, if you all are not comfortable going ahead with that one, that's fine. I can come back later. You just get to see me again. I talk about more good stuff.
So, I just wanted to clarify what the motion was for.
Okay.
We got all that?
So, we got all the events that's on there. Do we need to go with all, one, do we need to do them all separately?
Just wanted to clarify, whoever made the motion?
I made the motion for the four events that Lori's talking about, not?
Not the Horsey Hundred. Okay. So, the motion has been made about the giving permission for the four events, not including the Horsey Hundred. So, now, do I have a second?
I'm sorry.
Is it four or is it three?
Four.
Four?
It would be good to get them laid out from.
The Summer Concert Series has three. Best of the Bluegrass Festival of the Horse is two, and then Home for the Holidays is three.
So, we only have three then?
Three, yeah.
Thank you.
Minus the horse.
All right, so now, if someone wants to, we?
I'll do it again. I made a motion.
Yes, ma'am.
That was three.
You will make a motion that those three events?
Thank you for letting me.
Properly second. Are there further questions and/or comments?
I still would like to get a sheet that shows it clearly.
Yes.
I understand it's here, but not right now. I see a lot of different information in the packet.
Yeah, they're in here. I also sent them to you as a calendar invite.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I've seen that in Tracy.
If you let me know what else you need, I'll be happy to email you over anything.
Thank you.
Okay. It's been, motion has been made, properly second. Are there further questions and/or comments? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say likewise.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Scott?
Scott, shooting up behalf of the Woodstone Farms.
Come to the.
I'll be addressing items ten A and B on your agenda. So, if it's all right with you all, I'd like to give my comments at that point in time when we get to it.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
To clarify, sorry. He's here as counsel for the applicant, so that's why it's appropriate for him to wait.
Yes, okay. That's fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dwayne Ellison, Philly K, five K, excuse me?
Hello, just here again to each year to ask for the date that we've chosen. We have chosen this year the September twenty-first date, six P.M. That involves about an hour, hour and a half worth of closing down Main Street from Hamilton back to, shoot, what is that, back to old St. John's? Military, yeah, military. So, typically, it's busy around five-thirty, pretty packed, about a thousand to fifteen hundred folks for the five K again this year. And yeah, I'll get you the insurance when you guys give me the date and fill out the stuff like I do every year, so.
I make a motion. There's nothing in your packet because I don't have an application.
I was going to say, I didn't read that today.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, but yeah, I need the application and the insurance first, and then we can bring it.
I've said this every year. I can't fill out insurance for a date. I don't have.
Well, I need the application, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'll do that.
Okay, so.
So, do you have to give him a date?
No. See, September twenty-first, was that the date?
Yes.
Okay. And the application, do you need that application prior to this? Do you?
I usually try to put it on the calendar, so let me check the calendar and make sure there's nothing else on that date.
I always check with Georgetown College Tourism, everybody else, before I come to you with the date. U.K. schedule, college schedule.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, then. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Second, Mayor.
Okay, motion is made by Ms. Hambrich, second by Mr. Allen for September twenty-first. Are there further questions and/or comments? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say likewise.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Next, we have Tom Combs, Combs with the Fourth of July Parade.
Thank you. So, Mayor Jenkins, city council members, my name is Tom Combs. I'm with the Quantos Club of Scott County, and I'm coming to you with the event application and insurance to allow us to go ahead and coordinate this year's July Fourth Parade. Basically, we're following the same outline we have before, lining up entries on College Street and on the Military Street, closing down Main Street from about ten-thirty A.M. to about one o'clock, okay? The only thing different we're asking this year is also as far as Courthouse Square, having it kind of isolated. The American Legion holds twenty-four. In the past, they've gone down, I think, around the park and stuff, and they want to utilize this area to cook hot dogs and face pain that they do for the kids and people there. So, that's really the only unique thing. This year's theme, we've identified as Great American Traditions. So, again, we're looking for another great year. This is our eleventh year coordinating the July Fourth Parade. And you should have the insurance application as well.
I might have a question.
Yes, sir.
What has been done about crowd control, keeping the crowd back?
We, last year, it got, be kind of bad. So, we are trying to address that and identify some methods and trying to follow some of the ideas exercised in the Festival of the Horse Parade.
Okay.
Be roughed off, maybe, so the kids can't run.
Right.
Is there a motion?
Motion, Mayor.
Motion is made.
I'll second.
Motion made by Mr. Allen, properly second by Ms. Conway. Are there further questions and/or comments?
Yes. I would like for him to come back and inform us of what is being done for crowd control. I got a later date.
All right, and?
July sixth.
I can take that motion back.
Probably.
Are there further questions and/or comments? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say likewise. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. Dan Holman, Regional Development and Authority.
Hello, my name is Dan Holman, and I just had some comments about this. You all are voting tonight. There's on the agenda is a vote for a resolution for a regional industrial development authority, and it's kind of a big deal. I hope everybody's aware. It's something that Georgetown should think about. It just raises, it just naturally raises some questions, and I had emailed out to all of you all this morning some questions. It just came to mind. I sent it to the newspaper as well. So, there's not time for me to read over all the questions right now. I'd like to, but. So, I'm hoping that when this discussion comes up, some of you all, on behalf of the citizens of Georgetown, will have questions about this as well. It's something that discussion is needed. So, it's bringing in development into Georgetown, and so they're looking at a property. It's not been publicly announced, but kind of everybody, it's known. It's this Wiles Farm over between the two high schools. It's a nine-point-eight million dollar purchase, five hundred acres, and to make that an industrial park. And that's, so that's currently the comprehensive, if the comprehensive plan currently has that set aside for residential development. So, this would be going against the comprehensive plan and putting in industry, possibly an E.V. battery plant or something like that, like on the shores of the El Corrin Creek, surrounded by residential area. So, is this really a good idea? And shouldn't there be more conversation about it, is the question? So, and also, so then, really, one big point about this is developing Georgetown is good. Like, we have the Lanes Run, Bigness Park, we have other projects. But this would be different because we would be creating a partnership authority. Like, tonight, you all are signing for the mayor to set up an authority, and you're kind of abdicating your authority for there to be an authority behind the scenes, and you're partnering with Lexington, Madison County, Berea, Richmond. To, and for some reason, we're not partnering with these other surrounding counties, but those are the ones that wanted the deal. Some of the other ones weren't interested. So, basically, do we want to become just a big amalgamation with Lexington? Is that what we might be talking about here? And do, and so, just that's something to think about. Like, we are, Lanes Run is developing tonight, another resolution you're signing. Lanes Run is developing. There was no regional authority to make that happen. It's going along. The other development, I think, is about the Payne's Depot Road. That's a development coming in. No regional authority was necessary for that. The Lanes Run Business Park received a KPDI grant, which is the same grant that's being sought out for this regional authority. So, we can get KPDI grants. We don't, I think the state favors authorities, but we still got a KPDI grant for the Lanes Run. Okay, so, one question. Really, what should happen is this conversation should be put off to a larger conversation. There should be a workshop set aside. The comprehensive plan that is ready to go and was supposed to be presented to you all by the end of the year, and it's just late, nobody's, we're wondering where it is, needs to be brought to you all. You need to be presented with the comprehensive plan, one minute. Be presented with the comprehensive plan, and then this regional development authority should be part of that conversation, too. And Georgetown needs to decide what we really want to do going forward. We could frankly just buy that, and part of your capital budget that you're looking at this year, too, do you want to buy land? Do you want to do land banking, or do you want some regional authority and people in Berea literally controlling what happens in Georgetown? There will be board members from Berea deciding development in Georgetown, and they will be getting shipped revenue taxes back to Berea. Is that what we really want? Or we could do this ourselves. You all, the nine-point-eight million to purchase the property. You could spend two million and purchase the actual already zoned industrial land on Sims Pike. Those are two properties that you all could purchase with the thirty million we have in the bank. So, just, yeah, this needs more discussion, more questions asked, and we really need to, you know, be aware of our own comprehensive plan and what do we really want, and the citizens of Georgetown need to be included in the conversation. Thank you.
Okay, there's no others? All right, at this time, it's my mayor's comment. In the past, I've been very much, you know, in some of the comments that I made, I want to be clear that, you know, going forward, that making sure that the, not only this council, but the constituents of this city gets full detail on information that is needed, whether it be on projects, whether it'll be on procedures, or whatever that we're doing. And the goal is to make sure that then, that we get what we need as this council, so we make decisions, and that the citizens of this city is aware of what we are doing as we conduct business here for the City of Georgetown. So, my comments will be a little bit lengthy tonight and going forth as we continue to grow and we're to tend to do a lot of good things here in Georgetown. So, but first, I want to bring up the recognition of recovery-ready community destination. Captain Lodel, if you will come up.
Good evening. So, we're excited. I wanted to take the opportunity to recognize our community recovery support team and all of the hard work that they've put in with the many community partners to achieve the recovery-ready community certification. So, I'd like to introduce our recovery coordinator, Cory Council, and then Officers Nevett and Officers Christopher that are all a part, the three of them make up our team, if you guys want to come on. And what they're going to do is explain a little bit, a little bit more about what this certification is.
Mr. Mayor and council members, my name is Patrick Nevett. I'm a police officer with Georgetown Police Department. This is Cory and Jason. We recently were able to achieve the accreditation of recovery-ready community for Scott County. We were able to accomplish that through our great partnerships with a lot of community members, mental health treatment, behavioral health counselors, treatment facilities, people in the recovery field. We've been working with them for a long time, and so when we filled out the application, submitted it, it just made it that much easier and that much quicker to do so. And also, I'd like to say, two Mondays ago, through our partnerships with these agencies, we had a record day, and then we got four individuals into treatment on that day, which for us is a big deal, and they began their recovery journey, so just kind of excited about that and our kind of tangible partnerships and what they've achieved. And I'll allow Cory to kind of explain to you what it means to become a recovery-ready community.
So, yeah, the application process was really kind of a scorecard of where we are and, you know, what we needed to do to become recovery-ready, identifies the gaps. So, just because we got the certification doesn't mean it ends here. This is the time we're going to, any of the questions we couldn't answer affirmatively, we're going to go hard at those places and get recovery-ready in every aspect. And then, we're going to be reevaluated in three years. So, it was really nice to be the seventh in the state, and we hope to kind of spread our knowledge to other counties as well, so. And we did bring a copy of the certification for you guys, so you can put in your new chamber at whenever that's ready.
Cory, could I ask a question?
Sure.
What were some of the gaps that the city needs to work on?
So, a recovery community center is a huge thing. So, the application was in three parts, prevention, treatment, and recovery. So, the recovery community center would be a huge asset.
Okay.
The jail would be my number one go-to. Most overdose deaths happen after people are leaving incarceration because their tolerance levels are so low. If they return to use outside the jail, generally, it's what they tried to do before, and that's where we're getting a lot of overdose deaths. So, that was my, the biggest roadblock. You know, I really didn't want to turn the application in until I got some movement there, but every time I saw another county ahead of us, I was like, well, I can still get it done, you know? So, that's, those are my two big pieces that we need to work on.
Okay, thank you.
Well, you know, I went to the ceremony on Wednesday, and I'm going to tell you that that's a big deal. For this area, that is a big deal. You know, for this outreach, you know, trying to get citizens who are having a bad day or actually getting them back to recovery is one of the things I think this city is, I think, is showing that we are investing our people. And, you know, a lot of us have good days, and then a lot of us have bad days. But when every day, you know, you're struggling and you want your community to be behind you, this is one step that this city is taking to help with that. And I want to applaud them for what they've done because I'll tell you what, that is a big deal.
It is a big deal.
I think we do want a photo, but before that, council, you all remember that through our opioid abatement funds, we were able to bring Cory on full-time, and obviously, you can see the return on that investment. But also, Officers Nevett and Christopher are partially funded through our JAG funding, and I know I bragged on it before, but they kind of use our department as the model when other jurisdictions are applying for this funding. So, looking at their unit as a whole, you can really see what kind of good work we're doing, progressive policing and community rehabilitation efforts. So, I think it goes without saying that that funding is paying off exponentially. So, I just wanted to add that before you all take a picture and get up front and smile pretty as usual.
Okay.
All of us?
All of us?
All of you, yeah.
There.
Hold on. Smile pretty? I'm sorry. Okay, we're good.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
We're going to put a piece of orange tape on.
For me?
No, for everybody.
Is that failing you the last part?
Nope.
All right. Okay, a couple more. I just want to bring up on the, my comments. You know, it got some information as to, you know, some questions that was brought to the attention of some of the council members, myself, about the closing of the local Spectrum office. And as you all know, that on March eighth, they're going to be closing, but their local office here. Now, we have a franchise agreement, which they have to adhere to with the city, and they have certain requirements. They have to make sure that they're owning this city, but also that the citizens of this community that uses their service is adhered to. And we understand that they have met their burden on the, for the city, and we will also continue to work with them on making sure that they follow up with the citizens to make sure that they follow up with their requirements as to their due diligence for the closing aspects as required to them from their franchise agreement. So, we'll be still working with that, and I'm insured with that. Do you have anything else to add with that?
Mayor, do we know where the closest office will be?
Okay, as you all know, also, the Lemons Mill Bridge project, this is a state-supported project. And, you know, this is a big deal. As you all recall, that the state changed their restrictions on, when you went across that particular bridge and that it, when they took their restrictions and made it to where, you know, buses and trucks and so on could not go across that. So, they are going to be the main people doing this and they're going to, actually, we got awarded, they're gonna do this and if you're in Georgetown and that that's a good deal for us. Again, this is the state and not anything to do with the city doing this. And like I said, this, they've been trying to do this, I think, for a long, long time and they finally got around to where we got the award to do this. So, the state's gonna be taking care of that and we'll keep you updated as, as that progresses. Another issue is that we are doing ourselves and, and we'll be talking more about this, is that the Colony Boulevard intersection where on 25, you know, when they changed and we did the upgrade to Cardinal Road where the high school is, you know, if you ever go out by that traffic light coming down, not traffic light, but actually the backside by Colony Boulevard, when you come down to that intersection there, you really, if it was a heavy day, you got backed up in that, in that subdivision. Because if you were trying to make a left-hand turn, you know, you couldn't get back out if you were gonna turn right. So, we are taking initiatives on some concerned citizens as to try to alleviate that by adding a, a right turn lane to that. And we have been awarded the issue, a permit to get that done and we're gonna be putting out bids. And once we get, put out the bids, then later after we get all that information back, we will bring the council for final approval on that, okay?
Is that a left-hand turn lane coming out of Colony Boulevard?
Yes, excuse me, left-hand turn lane. Yeah, I mean, left-hand turn lane because you could go, you couldn't go right, but, so this would be, excuse me, thank you. Is it left-hand?
It's long overdue.
Yes, left-hand turn lane, thank you. Next, the developer impact fee consultant update. Again, this is something we'll continue to work with that and I'll let Devin talk a bit more about that because she has more information pertaining to that.
Absolutely. So, we've continued to meet with the consultant. The departments have worked really well with us to provide the data that they would like to review as they work through this process. So, we've been able to provide all of that. We had our onsite meetings a couple weeks ago, really successful. I know when council approved the contract, we talked about kind of the à la carte nature of the items. And as we've had conversations, we do believe that pulling the roads and transportation portion out is probably appropriate based on the way we require developers to bear the burden of streets anyways. So, we really don't have an opportunity to collect there. It wouldn't, it wouldn't be lawful, essentially be really susceptible to challenge since that cost is already being borne by the, by the development community. So, that portion, we don't think is necessarily appropriate as we continue to move forward pursuing what it might look like to implement those fees. So, I think that'll be coming to council soon with a contract amendment. One question that we've continually heard from the council is, is our level of confidence from a legal perspective. And in hearing that, we've asked them if they would be willing to, in that amendment, include a not-to-exceed fee for us to communicate with their council. Obviously, our contract doesn't include any of that, but if, if we contact their attorney directly, if Emily contacts their attorney directly with concerns about Kentucky-specific legislation or constitutional provisions, that's billable to them. So, we've asked for that line of communication so that we can raise any concerns that we have and they can keep that in mind as they navigate the process since they've not done a fee in Kentucky before. So, that will likely be coming to council at the next meeting. So, that'll be a net reduction in the cost of the contract, but just wanted to make you all aware that that's kind of where we are in that process and.
Devin, I have a question.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, what would be included in the impacts? What, what would be covered?
Yeah, so the, the other items were police service, fire service, municipal facilities, water, and sewer. And then that, like I said, there was a roads and transportation line that, that ultimately is really not a fit for us with, with the way we require development to occur as it is.
And so, all of those will be categorized separately and an impact figured out separately and the fee would be depending on the impact for that specific category? How would it work?
Correct. They'll, they will use the data in each category to, and create a formula essentially. That would be applied to each development.
Okay.
All right. Next, the city hall, as you all know, that a couple of months ago, a couple of the engineers and the management came over to give us some update as to the construction component and demolition part of the city hall. As you also, I hope you remember that, they talked about there was some, in the demolition portion, there were some issues that they found. And, and so, they're gonna be coming again to give us an update as to where we are, also hopefully a date to where we're actually gonna be able to actually move in. Because of the, the issues they found, there were some chance of being some delay. So, they're gonna bring that information to us a little bit later on, but then now, when they come, they're gonna actually give us, based on what they found, a cost of what would, would be for us to, for them to actually fix that. And correct me if I'm wrong, but this is also talking about, we have a contingent. So, the, whatever they end up, numbers-wise, comes out of that contingent. Is that correct? And that, for mayor?
Yes, mayor. So, they, you know, they presented in December on some of those conditions they found, either load-bearing columns where they didn't expect them or vice versa. And they've navigated that redesign almost to the point where it's ready to come to the council. They are separating portions of that out in the interest of timeliness, so things that are ready to go now will come to the council hopefully at the next meeting. And other things where they're still making sure they're negotiating the best, the best price and best timeline, those will come later. But there will be, unless something happens in the meantime, there will be something at the next council meeting to provide a revised project schedule and any cost implications. And as the mayor said, that would come in the form of a reduction of the contingency amount as opposed to an addition to the, to the contract total. So, just wanted to update you all because I know that presentation was in December and they'll go over, since it was a little bit ago, they'll go over those conditions again, really high level, before, before asking for a vote or anything. So, if there's any other information that the council would like to be part of that presentation, aside from cost implication, implications with the project schedule, let us know and we'll, we'll request that that be included.
And last one here is that, you know, the mental health court grant application. The justice courts here has asked the city to kind of go in and do a grant application for mental health. They have a drug court and they have others that help. And for them to get this application, they're only gonna give it to a city government or a government entity or another, and they have to have changed their tax form that they need. And so, since the court is asking to do that, they're not, they're not able to, to meet the requirements. So, they're asking the city to, to actually apply for this application. Now, we're not gonna be the ones to run this, okay? That's gonna be on them to do that. And all we're doing is, is starting this process for them to get this going because, as you know, mental health issues are issues that needs to be addressed and this is a good step forward on our parts to help them get this going. And once they get it going, they in turn, once they get their forms and everything in, they inform, they take part and do the rest of this. So, that's where we stand and like I said, we'll get more information about that as, as we progress.
I do have a question about that. So, even though the city's not gonna have anything to do with it, the justice system is gonna do that, but we apply for the grant and we're responsible for the money because it's gonna roll through the city.
Yes, but it's, and it's, excuse me, it is a, it's not a matching fund, okay? No matching, no, no matching, no.
My question is, is it gonna go through Stacy?
Well.
Writing checks and things like that?
So, we do need to navigate that. Can you mind if I give a little more?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, we were, we were approached about this by Judge Gabbert. She's a circuit court judge. She and Judge Hayes are over the drug court in their respective levels and they've been interested in pursuing a mental health court as well. As mayor mentioned, this grant funding, the AOC, the Administrative Office of the Courts, can't apply for it. It has to be the local government. There might be other eligible organizations, but I know it's either local government or a not-for-profit, a 501(c)(3) not-for-profit. They are working on establishing a 501(c)(3), but the timeline for this grant application is too tight for that to be developed. So, what they've asked is if the city would serve as the applicant and work to pass that funding through. As mayor mentioned, there, there are no matching funds, but we would, we've told them that if and when the council was interested in approving this, we typically only approve grant applications where there's a match, but this is a different situation, so we do want council approval. But we, we asked that there be a memorandum of understanding, kind of outlining the relationship and how, how the reporting is gonna be required and what our expectations are of AOC as a partner with them. She's worked closely with Officer Nevett and Officer Christopher and it, it's through the same grant portal that we utilize regularly. It's not, it's not a Department of Justice grant, so I don't think the reporting will be the, the same. That's kind of the cumbersome reporting we talk about. But council will be asked to approve that MOU and the actual application. So, this is, this is just kind of a heads-up that we're vetting this to bring to the council. We've also asked that either Judge Gabbert or Judge Hayes come to the next meeting to talk to the council about what the drug court or the mental health court would do. You know, if we're being asked to be an applicant, it'd be nice to obviously know what the program will, will bring and then that nonprofit will be the applicant the next year and we'll kind of pass the torch.
Yeah, it is a good idea. It's a good thing. I recognize that.
So.
So, two quick questions. How much is the grant? And then, the other question is, as far as reporting, will that come from the court and not Stacy or this, this body?
It will, we will be like on the portal responsible for submitting the report. We would define in the MOU what we expect of them in terms of getting us the reporting data and the information. So, that's why I kind of, you know, Emily recommended that, that agreement to very clearly outline their responsibilities. Our, they're working right now on a project budget. Apparently, this funding, they're, she used the words begging people to apply for it. So, I think they're assessing, they're assessing it in terms of planning their program and then assigning a cost, not assigning a cost and then designing their program. So, she should have that information when they, when they come to council at the next meeting. The application is due at the end of the month. So, all of this will come to you at the next meeting for, for consideration. But if, if there are questions in the meantime, please.
Yes, let them know.
Come touch with us at city hall.
Thanks.
All right. Next, we have council committees.
I acknowledge the budget schedule.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, thank you. The issue, also the fiscal year 2025 budget preparation meeting schedule, you all should have received that in your packet. This is the, the budget scheduling that we will do and with, with the different facets of it. So, if you have any questions on that, you know, be sure to let us know, but everybody should have received that. If you have not received that, please let me know. We'll make sure you get that to you. Yeah? Thank you. Next on the agenda, excuse me, is the council committee reports and we have police and we have public works. So, I'll go with the police first.
Okay, I'll make that report since Todd is not here this evening. We met and I believe it was last Monday and we had the mayor and Devin Golden and our city attorney and Todd Stone and myself and Chief Allgood was not there, I don't believe, was he?
No.
And Chief Nash was there and Captain Lodel. So, we first talked about staffing, hiring, and recruiting. And please correct me if I'm misstating anything, but Chief Allgood let the committee know to have the information that we hired our fourth SRO and our 65th officer. Is that still current?
Yes.
Okay. And we're also looking for a certified officer from Harrison County and Assistant Chief Nash stated that there were several interviews that were ongoing. And I asked about the diversity of the hires in this process and it was stated that we have a female officer in the academy and that there's an African-American male in the process as well. And the police department's gonna be attending the job fair at Georgetown College and EKU in March and Kentucky State University and Campbellsville University, all in the works. And they said they're gonna be pulling back on looking at non-certified candidates until probably July. Is that accurate? The SRO hiring for the school system, Assistant Chief Nash stated that there are two or three people looking at this, the SRO positions. Captain Lodel stated that the vehicle situation is still a work in progress. He's pulling three vehicles back into service for the school resource officers to be able to use. And council member Stone stated that the SRO situation has been a staple in certain schools for over 25 years now, which is a long time. And the legislature has been increasing funding for those as well. So, hopefully, that will happen. Then we talked about the traffic unit and Captain Lodel stated that the second reading is tonight and they will be asking for equipment. If we get a traffic unit, they're going to need to be equipped. And they are trying to pull everything possible from older vehicles, et cetera, in order to be able to use everything they can, but we need radios, laptops, other equipment. And they will put that in the capital needs column for next year's budget. And then we are talking about the Cortico app later on in the, the meeting tonight, so I believe there'll be discussion with that separate. And then we're gonna have mid-year budget requests with the addition of officers, including six SROs. Again, they're going to need to be equipped. There'll be a request for 10 MDTs, nine patrol rifles, nine pistols, and three radios. And they're even running low on badges and that's a good thing. The more people you hire, the more equipment you need. And there'll be a request for a vehicle maintenance line and Assistant Chief Nash previously stated is trying to salvage again as much as possible. You might be reading in the paper about the Are You OK program and they do have four people who have signed up to be checked on or to have their family members checked on periodically. And, you know, we would like to have more people be checked on because we feel like there's more people in need in our community that need periodic checking, so. And again, congratulations, we talked about the recovery-ready community and that Mayor Jenkins was gonna go to Frankfurt to receive the award. Georgetown Police Department Employee of the Month, Gloria Stamper, Police Department Senior Officers, Detective Chris, is it Fass or Foss?
Foss.
Foss, okay. And Detective Tom Otis, new hires, Officer John Little, SRO Natalie Payne, and I worked with her at Royal Spring, excited about that. SRO Bobby Jones, Officer Alexander Stratman, Officer Tyler LaRue, Officer Wes Catron, SRO Lee Murray, Officer Nicholas Gillespie. I made the request that we start seeing some of the data from some of the police runs so that we know in the city where theft might be occurring, where certain police runs are. And they said that they would be preparing that report and getting that to us. I think it would be important data for us to have. And then we adjourned the meeting.
Okay.
Any questions?
I have a question. Did I hear you say that legislation is increasing?
Georgetown Police Department Employee of the Month, Gloria Stamper, Police Department Senior Officers, Detective Chris, is it Fass or Foss?
Foss.
Foss, okay. And Detective Tom Otis, new hires, Officer John Little, SRO Natalie Payne, and I worked with her at Royal Spring. Excited about that. SRO Bobby Jones, Officer Alexander Stratman, Officer Tyler LaRue, Officer Wes Catron, SRO Lee Murray, Officer Nicholas Gillespie. I made the request that we start seeing some of the data from some of the police runs so that we know in the city where theft might be occurring, where certain police runs are, and they said that they would be preparing that report and getting that to us. I think it would be important data for us to have. And then we adjourned the meeting.
Okay.
Questions?
I have a question. Did I hear you say that legislation is increasing funding for the SROs?
We're hopeful.
Oh.
Yeah. And still, that's still in abeyance. They've got 30 more days, I think, to make those kind of decisions.
And then as far as the school system and the vehicles, where is that?
We are still negotiating with that. We're trying to make sure they understand that, you know, you know, what we, the leasing program we do, you know, we're just trying to work it out and somebody. So once we get that worked out, we'll make sure you get that. But all I can tell you right now, we're still working on that to make sure that we can get something that's going to be good for both parties, okay? Next, we have Public Works.
Well, we had a special call meeting. Public Works had it last Wednesday to talk about beautification, and Eddie and Robert and myself are on the beautification committee with Jalen Broyles, and there's another lady named Linda. And Eddie, would you like to tell them some things that we discussed? We have live questions for you.
So Mayor Jenkins and Jalen Broyles team got together and formed the beautification committee with the goal in mind of cleaning up areas around town that are subject to litter and maybe have overgrown brush. Start there with some cleanup efforts using Public Works labor as well as inmate labor to do, to do the heavy lift, to do the work. And we've met starting late last year and into this year and identified projects. We've all brainstormed in our meetings, identified projects in areas that, you know, we would like to start on first, and they are primarily the interstate exits on, on 75. They're kind of cleaning up around the, where you come into Georgetown, Connector Road, and also the park. Help me with the name of that park. It's.
The Peninsula.
Peninsula Park, thank you.
Mall.
Peninsula.
Thank you. It's across from the Uco Inn on 25, right on the, along the Elkhorn. Really nice, focusing on those four areas to start. We're going to meet with the folks from KYTC Wednesday to fill them out, since it's all, a lot of this is state property, to fill them out of what they will allow us to do as part of that effort. So if you have projects in minor areas that you are interested in looking at, the committee looking at, just let Mayor Jenkins know, and that will get back to the group that way, so. That's what the beautification is.
Connie, you want to say something?
No, not about that. I just have an update on our traffic study.
Okay.
Thank you, Eddie. Thank you. Thank you, Rob.
All right, so traffic?
Yes, please.
Okay.
And at our last traffic meeting, we hadn't had one for a little bit, and our next one will not be until March. But KYTC gave a presentation on the new road cut for Ward Hall coming out on 460. So now there's like one across from Payne's Landing, so they're concerned about pulling out and that kind of thing. So the state's going to look at trying to come up with some road ideas because we didn't want to do a ride-in, ride-out, or anything like that. So they might be widening that road. They don't, but they're going to get back to us. They're studying it. And then the draft of the traffic study was discussed with Banks Engineering, and they are coming up, they came up with some comments about traffic calming, and they are putting some more stuff together for us, and they're going to be bringing it to the council to give us a presentation. And the other items was discussed was proposed pedestrian crosswalk at Military and Clayton, where the new bookstore is, and ADA parking spot on, on Daily Park, on Wesley Avenue. Parking issues all over the, the area. And, but we're going to be addressing those and looking at those for our next meeting. And that's, well, one, one other thing that Eddie did tell me to follow up on Lemons Milk Bridge, Mayor, is that that actually, they received a bid for it. And that they're, so they're going to be starting on pretty soon.
Okay. All right. Next, said all. Next, we have the presentation of the 2023 financial audit and 2022 financial audit update. And I'll let Heather come and talk about that. Thank you.
Thank you all for having me. I'm Heather Cochran with RFH. I am here to present the 2023 financial audit, which all of you all should have in front of you. It's in the Greenbound booklet. But I also want to mention something that came up during the '23 audit related to the '22 audit. During our audit procedures related to '23, it came to everyone's attention that some money that you all received from KIA related to, I believe it's South Sewer, was thought to be 100% state-funded through June 30th of '22. However, that turned out to not be the case. Some of that money was drawn down from the federal piece of it. So KIA at any given time can pull money from the state or the federal when they're doing those draws, and, you know, it varies. So it was thought to be 100% state, and it wasn't. So that doesn't change anything in regards to our opinion on the financial statements for 2022. You still have a clean, what we call a clean opinion. But what it did change is there is a schedule in the 2022 financial statements called the Schedule of Expenditure of Federal Awards. We abbreviate that CFA, so if you ever hear CFA, that's what that means. And that federal money from KIA was left off of that schedule. So what we did, once it was realized, was we went in and we actually performed some additional testing to make sure it was in accordance with the federal guidelines. There were no problems. We didn't find any issues with any of the money. It was just misdesignated as state money versus federal. So we went in and we did make a revision to the '22 to show that. And again, it's just that one page on the Schedule of Expenditure of Federal Awards that we modified. And we did make a recommendation to say, you know, in the future, make sure that when you have pots of money that have a little bit of both, they can be a little bit hard to figure out what's federal, what's state. Make sure that you designate them properly. So we did have a recommendation of that. Again, it's a clean opinion from '22. We didn't change anything in that regard. It's really just the classification there, if that makes sense. And then I've got the '23 audit results, and like I said, you should have that in front of you. I'll just hit the high points for you. Page 1, 2, and I believe it's page 3 is what we call your independent auditor's report. And again, it's what we call a clean opinion. That's an unmodified opinion. That's what you want when you're looking at your audited financial statements. And under the heading opinion, which is actually the first two paragraphs, it'll say in the second paragraph, "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects." So that's a clean opinion. That's what you're looking for when you get an audit, okay? So that is on page 1 through 3. Now, there's also a report in the back. It's on page 66 and 67. This is a report on internal control and compliance related to governmental auditing standards. And you'll see on here, there's a phrase on here that says, "During our audit, we did not identify any deficiencies in internal control that we consider to be material weaknesses." And the governmental side of things, that's as good as it gets as well, so that's what you're looking for. And then the second piece of that, it says, "We disclose no instances of noncompliance." So again, that's what you want when you're looking at your audit, okay? Then the third letter is what we call your uniform guidance letter or the single audit. So this is where we do test federal money to make sure that you're in compliance with federal provisions. And you'll see there that it says, "In our opinion, the city of Georgetown complied in all material respects with the types of compliance requirements referred to above that could have a direct and material effect." So again, that's kind of as good as it gets in regards to the federal awards. That's what you want when you're looking at these reports. Are there any questions on any of that?
Good news.
Yeah, you always want a clean opinion. That's what you want to hear.
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Well, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have GMWSS. We have the leak eliminators.
Thank you, Mayor. We have two items for your consideration tonight. First is a purchase order for leak eliminators in the amount of $17,564.20. This is for a dig and replace of a gravity sewer just under, is a small portion of pipe, just under 175 feet. I think it's both eight- and 10-inch sewer. It's off Connector Road. This line is, as, as a result of inspection, we know that this line is a fastly approaching failure based on what we can see with the video, with the, the camera footage inside the pipe. It is very close to collapse, and it is allowing a large volume of ionized to enter our system. So this is a, we've known about this pipe, this section. This is a budgeted maintenance operation. We don't really call this a capital project. It's in our collections budget. We're asking leak eliminators to do this. This is through their contract, which is bid prices. So it is competitive pricing there. So we are recommending this purchase order for this small piece of work within our collections budget.
Chase, what's? Do you have a motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion that's made by Ms. Conway, second by Ms. Tackett. Are there further questions and or comments?
Yes, I have a question.
Go ahead.
What's the age of that pipe?
I don't know that I can tell you that, but I can send you that tomorrow. I can look that up.
Thank you.
Okay.
And what did you say was, was leaking into our water?
Well, it'd be the groundwater and stormwater is entering into our sanitary sewer system. It's taking up what we want to do is treat sewer, not, not groundwater.
I thought you said something like ionized.
Ionized, it's industry term for infiltration and inflow.
Okay, thank you.
All right. You, we made a motion made and properly second. And there's any further questions and or comments? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say likewise. At the, reflect that the motion passed. Next, K&amp;M Specialty Pump.
Next, we have a, a purchase order for $52,081.04 K&amp;M pump. This is for 12 weeks of bypass pumping service at wastewater treatment plant number one. Our influent pump station on the south side of the Elkhorn, which is the older side of the plant, we have four influent pumps that serve pretty much the southern half of the city that will come into that pump station. The first of those, those pumps is actually out of service, and we cannot get it fixed. Parts are becoming, because of the age, parts are difficult to come by, and somebody that can actually service those pumps, also difficult. The remaining three pumps, we are observing that they are losing efficiency, and, and it's, it's kind of a, another point of failure is, it's not a question of if, but when. So we are trying to take a proactive approach here between now and the time that the Plant 1 upgrade and expansion is complete, that we want to bring out bypass pumps. These will be electrical pumps that we will have there on standby. Should these pumps that are part of our pump station go down, the electric standby pumps will kick on, thus eliminating what could be a potential overflow and bypass of wastewater into the Elkhorn, which is what we do not want. We cannot have that. So we put out a bid to local specialty pump contractors, public bid, for bringing in the pumps that are correctly sized for the station. They'll sit there next to the station. They'll be hardwired in, so we won't have to have diesel on site for those. And it will allow us to, again, be proactive, be preventative about, as we, we try to stretch our existing infrastructure along as far as possible till we get to our beneficial use state. When we are putting the new plant into service, we, we have to keep the current plant running. So that's what we're doing with this service, put out for bid. We knew these types of things were coming with the age of the plant as we're trying to get the new plant online as quickly as possible. So this is just something that we feel like we have to do because we don't want to be unprepared in, in the case that more of these pumps go down.
Do you have a motion?
Motion, Mayor.
Motion's made by Mr. Allen, second by Mr. Hampton. Are there further questions and or comments?
Mayor, I just have one question.
Yes.
Chase, is this a budgeted maintenance expenditure, or is it a capital?
This will be out of our Plant 1 operations budget.
Thank you.
Any other further questions or comments?
Chase, did you say, what's the possibility of remanding these? Did you say you don't have, you can't find the parts, and parts are obsolescent, obsolete?
It's finding parts and, and just getting a vendor that will work on these.
All right, are there others? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right.
Those opposed say likewise. And reflect that the motion passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a key administrative officer and a, the first reading of the.
A first, excuse me, the chief administrative officer, the first reading of the annexation ordinance portion of 1530 Payne's Depot Road. Sponsors are Connie Tackett and Greg Hampton.
An ordinance annexed into the city of Georgetown certain real property containing approximately 86.90 plus or minus acres located at or around 1530 Payne's Depot Road in Scott County, Kentucky. Summary, 1. Annexes into Georgetown city limits by written consent of the property owner in accordance with KRS 81A412, approximately 86.90 plus or minus acres of property located at or around 1530 Payne's Depot Road in Scott County, Kentucky. 2. Provides repeal of inconsistent laws, severability of provisions, and an effective date upon passage of publication. The full text of this ordinance is available for examination in the city clerk's office, 629 North Broadway, Georgetown, Kentucky, 40324, or at www.georgetownky.gov. Publicly introduced and ran for the first time February 12th, 2024.
Okay, I think Scott, you want to talk a little bit about this?
Yes, thank you. Scott Shutey, on behalf of the applicant, Limestone Farms. As you'll see in the packet, this is part of a zone change and annexation process. The zone change went before the commission and passed 9/0. One of the conditions of that approval is that annexation go forward. Property owner has consented. I believe the city and county, or the county is going to be on board, hopefully, and make this smooth annexation. If you all have any questions, we're happy to answer.
I have a question. I, I, I realize that this was unanimously voted on.
Sorry, Willow, sorry. Are you speaking to the zone change or to the annexation?
Probably the annexation.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Okay. Do you, the only thing that people have, well, I don't even know if my question.
I think it relates to the zone change.
I think it does.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, we'll wait.
Hold off on that.
Yeah.
I'll be back up here for a second.
Okay. Thank you.
An ordinance changing the zoning classification of certain real property containing approximately 30-plus or minus acres located at 1530 Payne's Depot Road, Georgetown, Scott County, Kentucky, from A1 to B5. Summary, 1. Rezone to approximately 30-plus or minus acres located at 1530 Payne's Depot Road, Georgetown, Scott County, Kentucky, from A1 to B5. 2. Provides repeal of inconsistent laws, severability of provisions, and an effective date upon passage of publication. The full text of this ordinance is available for examination in the city clerk's office, 629 North Broadway, Georgetown, Kentucky, 40324, or at www.georgetownky.gov. Publicly introduced and ran for the first time February 12th, 2024.
Okay.
All right. The only thing people have been concerned about, and I saw that it was somewhat addressed, but I just want some clarification on the, the issue of mold.
Sure. And so that's an interesting topic, and that's been around forever. I mean, since, as long as bakeries have been around, that, that mold has, has been around. And that's the same type of mold that comes out of bakeries, that comes out of distilleries. But on this project, there is going to be no rickhouses or storage, which from all the industry folks that we've talked to, as well as scientists and other, not related to this case, but speaking with other scientists, is that the only time the mold comes into effect or becomes an issue is when there's storage.
Okay, and so it should be zero problem?
That's our understanding, yes.
Okay, and the only thing that I read about odor would be the smell of bread?
Correct. It'd be, it would be less than what you think of at a normal, traditional distillery that has storage as well because the rickhouses will add to some of that smell, but there will be minor smells associated with the distillation, but I wouldn't imagine that it impacts any neighboring properties.
Okay, thank you.
A question.
Yeah.
So in terms of the odor, and that's my biggest concern, the odor, the production would create some odor. How will the odor be monitored?
I, I don't know that there is a method to monitor the odor. I don't, I don't know that there's a, a smell test apparatus that we can put on the building or anything like that. But I know driving through Woodford County or through these other distillery operations, you don't really, as you're driving by, you don't smell it. It'd be more when you're on the property, I'd say, is when you're doing the tours, you'll get that smell. I don't think it'll be, a good example is like the Jif Peanut Butter Factory in Lexington.
Yeah, I can smell that here sometimes.
I don't think it's going to be like that.
There is something called a nasal ranger or a centimeter that monitors odor, and there is a process for that. So I would. So I would hope that that is used or some way to monitor that because there will be at some point probably residents complaining of odor, and I won't have to come back and have to deal with that.
Understood.
So let's make sure that we have a way to monitor the odor and ways to put countermeasures in place, okay?
All right.
This is a question, Chase. You know, in looking at the map, this map here, the blue with the pink. You're trying to visualize the map. So if you're, if you're on McClellan, you're taking a left on Payne's Depot, headed towards I sixty-four. This, this will be our first, if I'm not mistaken, I think this will be our first annexation. Going in that direction, on the outside of McClellan.
Going south.
On either side of Payne's Depot. So I just, I mean, I. With all the discussion that we've had over the last seventeen or eighteen months, and maybe that's where the, to me, I guess, the growth eventually is going to go in that direction. Are we, do we have the sewer capability right now? Because I know this is, this is the first annexation going in that direction. But I'm not naive, if, there will be more.
Is there a pump station already there, I think?
From a sewer standpoint.
So with the development and the construction implementation of our South Sewer Extension Project, I'd have to take you back to a presentation, multiple presentations that I did, it would have been three years back, I believe. And we looked at different ways to plan and develop that infrastructure based on planning area. What all properties, did we want that infrastructure, mainly the Kane Run Pump Station that is on the Jennings property to serve? And we sized that infrastructure accordingly. This property is within that defined service area. So we have allocated capacity and planning this, the size of this infrastructure for development of this property. Past that, going south with how the comp plan deals with the green belt, this property, there's no issue. When you get further south and further west, that is when we need to be planning for that future development, if that's the way that planning and zoning, City Council, I guess the fiscal court, where those governing bodies want to weigh in and guide Georgetown municipal on how we want to develop that infrastructure. So that is the collection and conveyance infrastructure side. The Plant One expansion, that is part of the service area for receiving flow at Plant One. That is, the capacity is there for Plant One.
Okay, thank you.
I believe, I see Joe sitting back there. Joe, this is being addressed in the update of the conference of plans, is that correct?
That area south of the bypass but north of Kane Run Creek is within the urban service boundary and has been since the nineties. So it's already included.
Right.
In an area that's planned for city expansion, annexation, and development. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
All right. Next. See the second reading of the amendment to personnel ordinance. Grant Administrator, Body worn camera coordinator, and three police officers. Sponsors Willow Hamburg and Todd Stone.
An ordinance amending section two dash six zero of the Code of Ordinances regarding personnel. Summary, one, amend section two dash six oh subsection C of the Code of Ordinances to create the positions of Grants Administrator, grade nine, within the General Government Division, and Body worn camera coordinator, grade five, within the Police Department, to increase the number of police officer positions from fifty to fifty-three within the Police Department, and to amend the position title of part-time maintenance coordinator to PPT Administrative Assistant in the Fire Department. Two, provides for repeal of inconsistent ordinances, severability of provisions, and effective date upon passage of publication. The full text of this ordinance is available for examination in the City Clerk's Office, six-twenty-nine North Broadway, Georgetown, Kentucky, four-oh-three-two-four, or at www.georgetownky.gov. Introduced and publicly read for the first time January twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four. Publicly read the second time February twelfth, twenty-twenty-four.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second, Mayor.
Motion is made by Ms. Hamburg, second by Ms. Tackett. Are there further questions and or comments?
The police officer positions from fifty to fifty-three, is that correct?
So the full head count includes sergeants lieutenants, so those are their own items. So yeah, the fifty to fifty-three is just officers. Yeah, correct.
All right. At this time, Madam Clerk, we have a roll call, vote.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Shawalter?
Yes.
Mr. Hampton?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamburg?
Yes.
Mrs. Butcher Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
No.
All right. Let the record reflect that the motion passed.
Can we still have comments on it, or is it too late?
Yeah, I think we, I think we've had a vote and commented, okay?
I was just going to explain my no, but that's okay.
Sorry, you don't have to, okay? All right, next, we have D, which is the resolution, excuse me, the sec, resolution authorizing the city to serve as a beneficiary for the KPDI Lanes Run Business Park Phase Three project.
So as it notes in the resolution, council passed a previous resolution in twenty-twenty-three, number thirty-one, that allocated funding on the application. So this, the KPDI program maxes each county out at two million dollars, and it's a dollar-for-dollar program. So of the Scott County funding of two million dollars, one point five of that has been applied to this local project. So Jack had a project budget of three million, so we had some easy math here, one point five in KPDI funds, one point five in local matching funds. So council approved that resolution previously. In order to apply to KEDFA for the next phase of the application, you're required to designate a grantee and a beneficiary, and they can't be the same party. So the fiscal court has agreed to serve as the grantee, and the city of Georgetown will be the beneficiary under the project. So we would, we would then move forward with all of the bidding, the procurement, and things like that. But the grantee will accept the funding and handle that administrative duty. So this, this resolution just designates us as the beneficiary and allows, Jack has worked on the application. Mayor Jenkins will, has drafted a letter to accompany that, and so we'll be able to take it to the next step in that process. So this is just a resolution that they require for that.
Motion.
Motion's made by Ms. Tackett. Are there a second? Second made by Mr. Hampton. Are there further questions and or comments?
Yes, I have a comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
In terms of communication to the community, has that been done or there's about this project?
Go, Jack, go ahead.
In terms of from this body, what's been communicated to the community?
So this is, take this as you will, when you, we look at the regional project, this is a KEDFA project. This is the Economic Development Cabinet. So while we have mentioned the site in this particular case, and the other site, the other one, we will not because KEDFA basically treats it as a but for. But for the incentive, you don't talk about it, you don't do anything. So we know it's Phase Three, we know that the community knows that Scott County, and that is the one that's pursued this. We've done it with the city and fiscal court. But in terms of, I think the press has even quite frankly done it.
My mistake, my question's for the next, next resolution, I apologize.
So are there further questions and or comments? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say likewise. Next is the resolution regarding the formation of a Regional Industrial Development Authority.
So this, this resolution, and broadly speaking, to kind of address your question a little bit. So the council recalls that, and I'd have to look up the dollar amount, I think it's like five-hundred-sixty-two thousand and change. So that's that other half million I talked about. So the other half million of Scott County's KPDI funding was allocated towards a regional application that was submitted with Madison County, Berea Richmond, LFU CG, Georgetown, and Scott County. So six entities expressed interest in participating in a regional project. At the beginning, the allocation of those dollars was just in order to get on the application the dollar amount that each jurisdiction was contributing or deferring essentially in their KPDI dollars. Some communities allocated their entire two million, Madison County's entire two million was towards this project. But since we had a local project that we thought took priority at the application phase, we said all we have to bring to the table right now is our five-hundred thousand dollars plus matching funds. So the council approved that. So in terms of conversation about this project, it's been mostly at the interlocal committee level and at that council meeting. I know Mayor Jenkins included this as part of the state of the county, or the state of the city address. I know it's been discussed at the fiscal court level extensively as well. In terms of details, the reason that this, this resolution is important is that to make it to the next level in the KEDFA process, the same as the local project, we can't even submit that application until we designate a beneficiary, and the beneficiary has to be that industrial development authority. So it's kind of a chicken and egg situation where in order to get the application to the next level, you have to develop that skeleton of the IDA, designate how many board members it's going to have, and do those, those things. So in order to engage in those conversations and keep pushing that ball forward to pursue this opportunity, this is a resolution that's required of every jurisdiction participating. This largely mirrors the resolution that the other jurisdictions have passed. Ultimately, when the time comes to put a stamp of approval on that, on that step, and when it comes to put money and to determine what above and beyond the allocation that we've already dedicated, what we're going to contribute to the project, those things will obviously come back to the council. Anytime there's an allocation of funds, it has to be approved by the council. So as of now, the only thing we have is a resolution on paper dedicating that five-hundred and change to the project. But to get to that next level, we've got to essentially allow the mayor to take the steps with these other jurisdictions to develop the authority to even submit the next application. Talking about the regional effort and leveraging resources, and I'll stop in a minute and allow any other questions. Like I said, we're dedicating half a million and a match, whereas other communities, we're benefiting from two million dollars of Madison County money, and I think one point eight seven five of Fayette County money. So those, those are dollars that applying alone, we would only be able to leverage a max of two million dollars. And we're hopeful that there's going to be additional state funding for these regional projects because I think I heard it mentioned earlier that the state is, they want these regional efforts. They want to see communities coming together to leverage resources and ultimately find a way to distribute those revenues. The goal with this IDA is not that the Scott County site be the only project. The goal is that in the future, if Madison County or other, other partners are able to identify a site, and it's feasible and it meets due diligence phase, that, that the IDA would develop there, and we would see revenues coming from those sites as well. So that's a really high-level, you know, overview, and if there's any follow-up questions, glad to take those. And I know Jack would be allowed to.
Have we studied other IDAs to see how their systems work and what are some of the?
That's exactly, that's exactly part of the due diligence we're going to be doing, not just in terms of development of industrial development authority, but looking at what other regional parks and industrial development authorities, and there are a myriad of those in state of Kentucky. Those become our benchmark. Everything becomes a benchmark, whether it's equity positions or whatever. You've got to be able to do that. This is, however, as I said, I thought you were addressing it on the Phase Three. This is really, I talked to Colin Dodd, who is the Economic Development Rep, who represents our KPDI on the region. This is strictly a non-disclosure thing. You are not to discuss who, what, or where. So we know it's a site here. I would like to make other one quick mention of something that was addressed earlier. We're not talking about an industrial park. The comment was made, we need a Lanes Run. This will be another Lanes Run. It will be a BP One. That is a part of what we discussed with planning and zoning, so it's not industrial. It's, it's a business commerce park, just like Lanes Run.
And I think those are some of the comments that need to be out there so that people understand, have a better understanding. Not in terms of location of what's being purchased or being negotiated. I understand that's confidential, but just an understanding of what this is about, regionalism, what it's going to look like, and that you are studying other IDAs. So I think that's what people are looking for.
Mr. Holman, I had a conversation earlier. I've offered, I would be more than happy to spend an hour, two, three, four, five, six hours with him discussing some of these issues. I can be very frank with you in saying, I've been doing this for forty years. I've never had that first comment from anybody in the community that said that these things that we've been doing were negative in any way, shape, or form. These are, these are, these are the kinds of things that give you great return on your investment. It's just, it's the proofs and the numbers.
Yeah.
And I'd be more than happy to sit down with him or anybody else for that matter.
I have a quick question, Jack. Aren't there other communities like Tennessee and places that are already doing that?
Well, how about local? How about local? Bluegrass Alliance, we've been meeting since nineteen eighty-eight. Guess who filed for a PDI? Franklin and Anderson County together. So there is a myriad of them. There was a pilot round, there was a first round, a second round. A lot of communities and counties have already done this. We're not the first.
Right.
Okay, we're just following what everybody else did.
And if I can add, the formation of these industrial development authorities, it's established by state law. So there's a legislative scheme that dictates how this authority is to be created. So as far as a question about the entity that's being created, there's no recreating the will there necessarily. So just, just know that there is a section of Kentucky-provised statutes that speaks directly to industrial development authorities, what their powers are, what the membership looks like, that sort of thing.
Yes, yes, sir.
Some might, some might not think this question's relevant, but I think it is. We had an interlocal committee meeting in this room last month. And I asked the question, and again, I ask you to look into your crystal ball.
Oh, my gosh.
And, you know, it's, it's, there are a lot of unknowns.
Sure.
You know, we don't know what the overall national and state and local economies are going to do moving forward. But Lane, Phase Three of the Lanes Run Business Park.
Yeah.
Best-case scenario, I mean, we're, once.
I've already got clients. I've already got clients. I don't have the land. We have seventy acres left. This gives me another almost eighty, a little over eighty acres. Means if we can develop it properly, I'll have about thirty-eight, thirty-eight site by itself. So I've lost a number of clients looking at thirty-five or forty acres for Greenfield. Yeah, it's going to continue.
So within roughly, I didn't mean to cut you off, I mean, just a couple of years.
Cut me off, because I can't give you that answer. Yes, it's going to be short-term.
And then once, once that's full, you know, we've, we've sit here and talked for the last thirteen months now.
You all, you all have budget numbers, you have occupational numbers. You know where it's coming from, and you know, I consider to tell you the stats of where your revenue is coming from. It's manufacturing, and we're going to continue to grow. And if you, I wanted to last comment. We invested a significant amount of money to do an economic development strategic plan. Guess what it talks about? Regionalism. Talent attraction, regionalism. We develop a regional plan that we're a participant in the Bluegrass Alliance area. What's it take? It takes product, it takes working together. I could give you a bevy of empirical data, and I'll give you two. Orbis was in Limpak, went to Ropak. Guess where it came from? Commerce Lexington. They came, that client came to us. YSPS, a Japanese joint venture, guess where it came from? Commerce Lexington. If we're not working together, it's not going to happen, let alone the commuting patterns of where people are coming from and work here. You all know that, Jack's got those statistics.
All right.
Any other motion?
I'd like to, I'd like to make one more statement, and I think the six of us really believe we get it. But I think that this comment's more for the general public in the community. When that Lanes Run, when the Phase Three of the Lanes Run Business Park is completed, and then it's, and then it fills up, we have to have a plan.
Right.
To continue to bring jobs to the community for, for people in our age group, for our kids, for our grandkids. So when they graduate high school or they graduate at trade school, they don't have to leave. They can stay here in Georgetown.
And the other thing, I'm not with that.
We've got to have vision. And again, Jack, you said forty years you've been doing this, and this.
It's the next step.
This is having vision to think ahead of, not just today, but ten, twenty, thirty. this, this is having vision, to think ahead of, not just today, but 10, 20, 30 years down the road. So, I, I mean, I, 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 we have to have the vision.
And this is a generational decision. Yep.
Yeah, motion, Mayor.
I do.
Motion.
Motion is made by Mr. Allen.
Second.
Second made by Ms. Tackett. You got first, you're Tackett.
Okay, I just wanted to.
And then, now, do you have questions or comment?
I only have a comment. I'm backing up what Mark was saying, is that, that is also where our revenue comes from in order to do what we do, is from jobs.
All right. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say likewise. Let the record reflect that the motion passed. Next is F, a resolution authorizing cost sharing for due diligence services for regional KPDI project.
So, this one obviously goes hand-in-hand with the last resolution. The conundrum we've run into over the authority not being developed has, has created an issue where, in order to engage contractually for due diligence services, somebody has had to step up to the plate and enter into that contract. Scott County Fiscal Court has done so with the expectation that a portion of the cost be reimbursed by, you know, a combination of the partners in the meantime. Any allocation toward that will be then credited toward the investment in the project. So, we've, we've kind of got a system going of keeping tabs on who is, who's pledged what in matching funds, and who's, who's committed funding in other ways. So, this will authorize the city to participate in funding that up to a half of it. But it, it's kind of one of those where we're making sure that the other partners have, have pledged their portion. So, it's a not-to-exceed amount in the resolution.
Motion, Mayor.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Allen, second by Mr. Hampton. Other further questions and or comments? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say likewise. Thank you. Number 11, fire.
Thank you for everything you do, Jack.
Thank you, Jack.
I appreciate it.
Fire, second reading of the ordinance amending code, open fire. Spouses Mark Showalter and Sandra Wilkins-Brett.
An ordinance amending Chapter 16, Article 1 of the Georgetown Credit Ordinance is regarding the regulation of open fires, creating a new section of Chapter 16, Article 1 to establish penalties for ordinance violations and repealing Section 28-4 regarding bonfires. Summary, one, amends Section 16-1 to establish and clarify the standards for open burning with and without a city-issued open burning permit within city limits. Two, creates a new section of Chapter 16 to establish civil penalties for violations of Section 16-1 and the process to appeal citations. Three, delete Section 28-4 related to bonfires, which are now regulated under Section 16-1. Four, provides for appeal of inconsistent ordinances, several penalty provisions, and an update upon passage and publication according to law. The full text of this ordinance is available for examination in City Clerk's 629 North Broadway, Georgetown, Kentucky 40324, or at www georgetown ky.gov. Introduced and publicly read the first time January 22, 2024. Read the second time February 12, 2024.
All right, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion. Motion made by Mr. Showalter, second by Ms. Tackett. Other further questions and or comments? At this time, Madam Clerk, a roll call vote?
Mrs. Hamburg?
Yes.
Mrs. Butcher-Cromway?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Showalter?
Yes.
Mr. Hampton?
Yes.
Next, we have police, and we have the municipal order approving contract with Lex Poe for the CODEO wellness application. I forget what I was saying, right? All right.
It's just a wellness app, right?
Right, so we've, we've been talking about this for a while. I know Assistant Chief Nash has done a significant amount of legwork on this, and he's also coordinated with dispatch in the fire department to get, get them involved as well. So, the contract is broken down by department in terms of what their per department cost will be. As you know, this is available to retirees. It's also available to family members of current first responder personnel. So, something that will require a budget amendment, something that the council, or that's something that the police committee has expressed support for, and that the department believes is going to be an asset to their members.
All right, so do I have a motion?
So move.
Motion made by Ms. Hamburg. Do you have a second?
Second. Go ahead.
Second made by Ms. Conway. Other questions and or comments? All those in favor of the motion, seeing myself, I say an aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say likewise. B, municipal order approving surplus vehicle donation. Okay? All right. Chief Loel?
Hello again. So, we have a 2006 F-150 in our fleet. It's a, it still runs, but, so at least there's that. But, no, we had, there was a volunteer fire department in McKee, Kentucky, down in Jackson County, that had expressed some interest in reaching out to some different municipalities to see if there was any four-wheel-drive trucks that may be available for donation. This is one of the oldest vehicles that we had identified as one that we were going to look to cycle out of the fleet this year. And so, we just wanted to bring for your consideration an opportunity for the city to be able to help a neighboring community out, a volunteer fire department. And they, they've come up, they've looked at the truck. It sounds like it's going to, going to fit their needs. And again, it was one of the vehicles that we had identified as cycling out of our fleet, so.
And motion, I think that's awesome.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion made by Ms. Tackett, second made by Ms. Conway. Are there further questions and or comments?
I have a question.
Yes, sir, go.
It's had 67,000 miles. What's wrong with it?
It's, it's old.
It's old.
So, it's not that it doesn't run. It does run. I mean, it's going to require a lot more maintenance when it goes to its new home.
It says the repairs exceed the value of the vehicle.
What's that?
The repairs exceed the value of the vehicle.
It does. I mean, I, so I first started at a six-man department in eastern Kentucky, so I know exactly kind of what these folks, when they came to us, what they're up against. The department I first started at didn't really have much of a budget, and we just learned to beg, borrow, and steal. Not really the latter, but we just learned to make whatever we had work. And so, you know, the idea of being able to afford something new, at least when I worked there, was that was just a pipe drain that just wasn't possible. So, I think with them, they kind of understand that they're going to be getting something that's going to require a lot of maintenance. But it's, you know, something's more than nothing. They don't have anything to work with at the moment. So, we just saw this as an opportunity to be able to give back.
I bet they got some talented people that will know how to work on that thing, though.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Is there any other comment or questions? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say likewise.
Thank you.
At this time, we have council comments. Again, if you have got some information or requests from your constituents, please let us know that, and we'll get Madam Clerk to write those down, and then we'll get this assigned to someone in our staff to look into, and we'll give you an update on that once it's done, okay? All right, we're going to start with Mr. Allen. We're going to start with you, if you will.
Last, on January 25, I visited fiscal court. They had a presentation by Net Device. It's called a Net Device. Rick Hotstetler had sent it to a couple of us and a video, and we watched, and he asked that we attend. They did a presentation, and it is a device that, I'm not going to get all this right. It places behind the ear, and then they have this little small handheld device that's connected, and they can monitor some kind of frequency or something. And it is designed to curb behaviors of alcoholism, street drugs, prescribed drugs. And they actually had people in the presentation that had used this. And they were still doing well after, I think, six months, something of that nature. They had asked the court to support a trial that they were doing of 30. They asked Scott County to do 30 participants. I think the cost was about 3,200 per participant, and I think the court did approve that. But they actually had people that, again, have used this device and said that their craving for, their addictive behaviors for cravings was no more. And I just wanted to see, maybe we could have some discussion to see if we wanted to bring them in, see if they want to do a presentation to the council or not. So, just a consideration, not looking for a yes or no now. I voted no on the personnel ordinance, and the reason I voted no is because we, we approved a technology position about four months ago, which was a grade nine. And tonight, I know we need the body worn cameras coordinator, we need that. We need the three police officers. I'm not comfortable with the grants administrator. We just, we don't have, I don't, I don't see where the money's coming right now. We're still spending a lot, and I don't see where the recurring money, recurring revenue was coming to kind of offset some of these things. I know that it can be said that a grant administrator can, based on what they do, can offset their cost, but I just, you got to look at, a grant administrator's a grade nine, which is 50 to 82,000, and then benefits on top of that. They're still going to have to work with each department. And I had asked that the departments provide some information on how much time they're currently spending on writing grants. So, my hope was that they could continue doing that, and we could. Now that we have a city attorney, I was hopeful that the CAO could pick up some of those big grants for right now. We could always look at a grant administrator down the road, but it's approved, so I just don't know where the money's coming from.
All right, anything else?
I think that's it.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Tackett?
Mayor, I'm good, thank you very much.
Ms. Conway?
I'm good also, thank you.
Ms. Hamburg?
Yes, Stacy, I know that it's always a relief when the audit is approved, and the finance committee, thank you, that's a lot of hard work, and kudos, that's, that's a relief. I saw something that came through from tourism about the car shows. And we talked, I don't know, quite a few months ago about possibly not having all of those car show road closures. So, as we revisit that going, I'm not against the car shows, I'm just wondering if there might be an alternate place to put some of them so that we don't have eight or nine months of once a month closing down Main Street? Because I did hear from some of the Main Street people about that last time. Again, I'm very excited about Corey Council and the recovery-ready community. I think that's going to be a real benefit, and that took a lot of hard work. So, that's a wonderful thing. We did have the K-count. It seemed like a lot of people, and I'm sure it's an undercount as well. Was it like 53? Or was it?
It was, I think the total, the total was 75, I think, but 60 of those were actually sheltered.
Okay.
15 was not sheltered, which means, shelter means that they have a place to go that night. And there were 15 that did not. But then, of those that were not, was given an opportunity when we went out and said, "Hey, this is open if you need to go there."
Okay. So, I'm glad Candace is in that position and that she's working on the, the, what is she calling it? The sort of tip, the needs survey or the needs assessment?
Housing needs assessment.
Yeah. If there's ever a need for a task force to come out of that, to try to hone in on what the city can do, and this is one reason why I'm really excited about the grant administrator position. I think there's a lot of federal money out there, and I think there's state money that's being lost to us. We have, as the sixth-largest city and growing, we're actually, in my estimation, understaffed. And to be able to relieve some of these grant-writing duties from the people who are having to take care of so many things, I think this will help Emily. I think it will help Devon. I think it will help Stacy. I think it will help our police department and our fire department. And I think we're going to see great benefit from this position. So, I, I respect your opinion, but I was just on the other side of it. And as well as the traffic unit, I'm looking forward to that. I know Connie is too, and anybody else on the traffic committee. We know that that's been a huge problem. And another shout-out to Elizabeth Village. They had their philanthropic fundraising Saturday night. We went to it. It was, it was well-attended, and it's just a wonderful thing to help women who are in need and, and going forward with that effort. And I know our city does give, I think it's, it's under-reported that we do give philanthropic contributions in our budget as line items every year, and Elizabeth Village is, is definitely one of them. So, that's it, Mayor.
Mr. Hampton?
Thanks, Mayor. Just a, a couple of things. First of all, I did have the opportunity Saturday morning to attend the legislative breakfast. A lot of good information come out of that. They are having another one next month.
March.
Next month, and, you know, would be a good opportunity for everyone to attend and just see, see what, what's coming through the House and Senate, and that, you know, and to give input into it. So, just encourage you to do that. Also, my wife and I, we did have the opportunity to attend the Elizabeth Village function Saturday night as well. It was a really good time. As we've stated, a lot, a lot of people in attendance for a good cause. You know, and I think, you know, going forward, the city needs to, you know, look at, you know, how, other ways we can, we can help Elizabeth Village and other, other shelters that do similar functions. So, it was a good time, and I want to thank them for what they do. And lastly, Stacy, again, thank you for the, for the clean audit. I know that's, I know personally how that, how that feels, so thank you.
Mr. Showalter?
Three quick items. It's, it's hard to believe that in just a, just a couple more years, Toyota will have been in Georgetown and Scott County for 40 years. We're just a few years away. And the reason I bring, bring that up is, is Toyota made a, a, just a, a, words can't even describe what kind of announcement they made last week. Over $1 billion to this plan. And why that's so important, whether you've had a spouse that worked there, Alonzo, Greg, myself, I mean, I know others have as well. Toyota's been very good to this community. And I hope they're here for at least another 40 years. And they, they've had outstanding vision, leadership, and a commitment. Some of the things we talked about, that we needed. And so, it, I just, I, I think that's very important that they're an outstanding partner. Outstanding. Second item, Stacy, thank you for a clean audit. It was a short presentation tonight versus years past, but thank you. And then, third, I think, I think he's already left. Mr. Hampton brought it up at our last meeting. Misses Tackett brought it up tonight when she was talking about the new Ward Hall exit slash entrance coming out on 460. We have got to continue to focus our attention on streetlights. We can't let up. We can't. I mean, we, we, you've made a commitment tonight, earlier in the meeting tonight, Mayor, about the Colony and adding that left-hand turn lane coming out of the Colony going onto 25. The streetlights are just as important. They can't be forgotten. And at some point, you know, after two-plus years of approving streetlights, at least two and a half years, well, at least two years, no, it's been at least two and a half years ago. And they're, they're still not up. And I think there were 26 or 27 streetlights that we approved to be put up, and if we're, I think maybe two or three have been put up, four? Mayor, we, I hope, I might not be here the way we're going. I, I hope you don't let up, because it is important. And I hear it constantly from people, the dark areas in, on countless streets and roads throughout the Georgetown city limits. So, don't, don't let that, don't let up, Mayor. That, that is, it's important to a lot of people. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So, if there are no other business to be brought to this council, this meeting is adjourned.